Hello. There we go. I'm going to turn my earbuds off. The mayor is on route. He will be joining us shortly, but in the...
Members, for this first item, we're going to talk about the Canvey area transit potential relocation of our office and our bus barn or bus parking area. And Mr. Todd Wood, our transit director, is going to give you a presentation on this item. Todd Wood.
Hello. It's kind of weird. I've been here, I guess. I've been here a year and a half, and this is the first time I've sat in front of you all. Which is, it's a strange feeling. So I'm going to talk a little bit today about the transit office and building a new building. Before I do that, I think I sent out an email to Sarah for sure, but I just want to let you guys know that the transit system is considering starting up fairs again. I'm going to wait till September 7th when school starts, but just be aware that we're going to kick that off. All our transit partners around us have either started fairs or have a plan to start fairs again. So that will begin, hopefully, September 7th. So if people ask questions or wonder, that's what we're doing. So back in August of last year, it has been that long, I came before the digital council at the time, and we talked about the fact that we had a piece of property and we're currently renting, and we wanted to look at not renting anymore. And at that time, we had some alternative options, and I was directed to go look at those alternative options and come back with a report. So that's, it's been almost, almost a year. It's taken, the COVID pandemic has slowed the entire world to a crawl, so. All right, so just for those of you who are fairly new to the council, originally, the office is for CAT. So we took over CAT from Trimed, or the city took over the transit system from Trimed in 2002. We were the third of the major transit organizations to give Trimed the boot, that's not the right word, but, and say, "We want to run our own stuff for ourselves," and the last being the city of Sandy. At the time, the offices were located downtown. Now, if I, it's, I worked at Cub, and I vaguely remember the little building that transit eventually became located to, which was near the old Cub office. I think the dallya is now on top of where that was. Because it was just such a small office, they had the buses parked on First Avenue, except for the larger buses, those had to be parked over in Cutsburg, so they were sort of parked all over the place. And then the city said, "We're building a new building, we're going to move," and the dallya needed to go in, and they said, "You guys need to find someplace else." And so they ended up on Hazel Dell Way. The original property why they wanted to build was actually, if you're looking at Wilco, they were originally looking at, to the right, if I'm facing Wilco, to the right of Wilco, there's an odd piece of property. They were looking at that. That didn't work out, so they ended up renting a small space from Mr. Zimmer in the little strip mall that's right next to Wilco, which was to be a temporary location, and we're there seven, eight years later. It's a small, small area, it's about 1,700, smallest 1,700 square feet I think I've ever been in, it's got one restroom, we house 17 contract employees plus the two city employees in this location, so. Back in 2015, rather than have the buses parked out front or scattered around, they purchased from Pioneer Pump just a section of the lot behind Wilco, and they turned that into a bus yard. And so that's where the buses started to park. Then later, the, there was an agreement to purchase the remaining section, which gave them a total of about two acres. So right behind the strip mall, there is a two-acre parcel that has some of the largest, most exciting gophers I've seen. And right now, it's mostly grass, trees, and a small lot for the parking structure that we park the bus on. It is gated, but it is open to Pioneer Pump, and at the other end of Pioneer Pump, it's just open. So it's not really a secure lot, it's just sort of a lot. So there's all the pumping stuff, and all the trucks, and all the, those employees in our lot as well. So when I started, Julie had mentioned that there were other options they had considered in the past with the shop, but those weren't feasible at the time because nobody knew when Cub was going to leave. And so then Cub decided to leave, and so that came, became an option, and nobody had really done the full exploration of that, so she retired and said, "You should go look into that." And so that's when I came to the council, and the council said, "Go, go look into these options." So we hired Kurt MacLeod, and he hired a company called Water Leaf Construction to study the various possibilities of where the transit system could go, where would be the best place to build the property. And so they came up with four different sites, our site plus three potential shop sites, and did a study on all of those. And then when we hit about December or January, they said, "Hey, would you like us to look at also electric, charging stations and what that would look like on the property as well?" And I said, "Yes, please do that." So they've incorporated into the designs and thoughts how it would look like if we also electrified, which I think we need to do when we build, so that we don't have to tear everything up and pull up wires later. So they went out, did the study, and they came up with the four sites. We looked at the four sites, and I'm going to go through each of the four sites and talk about the pros and cons. Two of them, we eliminated very, very quickly, and I'll explain why. So the very first site we looked at was at the shop itself, was on the backside of the shop. And this one got eliminated fairly fast. First of all, it's only an acre in size. There's no real good way for customers to get there, and the costs to alter that area are pretty extreme. You have to take down part of the existing shop building. You have to level that, that, if you've ever been out there, nothing is level, the parking lot is fairly unlevel. The whole thing would have to be re-leveled. You've got security concerns with the other city, because we use a contractor for all our drivers, so you have security concerns that we'd have to address. And then you're stuck, there's no, you know, you've got the trail to one side, you've got the city shops, you've got the wastewater plants, so there was just really no place to go. And when they looked at the potential costs of even doing any of that work, it was, it was just so high that the contractor said, "It's just not worth your time or money." So we kicked that one away right away. So then we looked at the parking lot, and I actually really liked this one originally. We thought, okay, well, once Cub is gone, we can move all these city employees into, we can make parking inside, move all the city employees parking there, give them secure and then parking there, and then we would take over the existing city shop building for our offices, and they build them a new building. And the problem we came into here is we're space constrained. Because the property to the right is land that's designated for future use, we couldn't go any further than the fence border, and then you have the wastewater plant above. So you end up with only an acre of land again, which is not enough for the size of our buses, and in order to rotate through the parking lot, you're rotating it to the right of way that all the other vehicles are going through. So while the cost might have been somewhat comparable, the actual access was a problem, and the conflict with all the other vehicles that were going through, there were huge problems. So they eliminated that one right off the bat. So that brought us down to two options, both of which we took all the way through the entire design process to look at them. So the site number two, which you can barely see from here, is actually, oh, you can see over here. There is a packet I sent with, I sent the entire study in the packet, and this is on there. But what you're looking at is, if you go up territorial and you head towards the shop, you know where they're building the new fire station. This is just south of that, and it's in that strip that's just south of the fire station. So it's about two acres in size, and they would have to clear out the tree, again, everything to the right is that protected property, everything to the left is Echo Park, so you're stuck kind of in this little area. But they were able to lengthen enough to give us two acres, which is about adequate for the size of our system with some growth. The problem we came into was, when you actually build it out, which is what this is, you'll notice that we're going into the access road. Because it's so skinny, the buses, in order to rotate through the lot just to get in and out, or to go to the wash bay, have to rotate back into the access road. And because you need to have a secure facility, you end up with fencing along the way that are opening, closing constantly, and it just, they actually had to redo this about six or seven times to try to find a way to rotate the buses through properly without causing conflict. So it, so there are some challenges, but they did meet most of them. And this one, so this one is a potential option. It's skinny, it's long, it doesn't have direct customer access, because we're kind of off the beaten path, as most of the city shops are. Bus movement becomes a problem, and then every time we pull a bus out into the roadway, we're dealing with whatever other city services are passing through there. So it has some challenges there. But we had them fully build this out, and the cost to do this is about $3.1 million. That's assuming all the improvements, pavement, building. They've got a huge buffer there of about $700,000. What it doesn't include is the electrification. The electrification piece is not actually built into the cost structure on these estimates, so you could figure that's going to add some additional costs there. But that's something we'd want to do. So we went from there, and then we looked at the property we actually own. Now, the property we actually own is, as I said, we, it's kind of a shared lot with Pioneer Pump. Everything you see to the one side, that's all Pioneer Pump, that's all open right now to what we have. There's no, there's no blockage, there's just openness. So some of the issues we have is we're going to have to fence that, and we have to build Pioneer Pump a new access, because we would be taking away their access road. Then we have to fence the whole thing, level it, and then build out. However, the shape is ideal. It's almost twice as long as it is wide, so it gives us a lot more flexibility. It's about two acres, which is about the right size for our current system, plus some future expandability. The problem is, you're also landlocked here, so, you know, in 20 years, if all of a sudden we explode and we need more property, we're just going to have to move. I don't anticipate that happening, you never know. I mean, you never know what the future holds. As of right now, it looks adequate. So when he built this out, it builds out beautifully. You have, all your movement is within, inside the yard. You have your operations building customer-facing on Hazel Dell Road, it's easy for them to access it. You have no conflicts with any other services. There's enough space, we have a wash bay up here on this end, which is great. And then should we ever get big enough where we need the maintenance guys to do the work out here, or we just decide we want to keep the buses on site and have the maintenance guys just work on them here, there is some room for a future maintenance building if necessary. So at the end of the day, the property behind us ended up being ideally sized. Now, cost-wise, it ends up being almost the same. It's about $100,000 cheaper, however, if you sold this property, I think the retail value, they said it was about $800,000, then you could take that $800,000 and apply it to the other property, so that property would be about $700,000 cheaper overall. However, this property is more ideally suited for our current operation. So then we had them both electrified, so that they could show us what they would look like electrified, because the future of transit is likely to be more electrified vehicles. Now, right now, they're super expensive, the buses that they're building are about 1.1 to 1.5 million dollars. They don't have the distance they need to go, so we can, Canvey's fairly flat, so some of the challenges that some of the other properties have with hills don't apply to us. However, you're still talking Oregon City to Woodburn over and over again, no electric bus is going to make that through the entire day. So there's challenges there with electric buses. That being said, they're making a lot of advances. And a lot of the smaller vehicles can be electrified, such as the small cutaways, they just started coming out with those, they had just done the larger buses, hadn't done the cutaways, those are, those are the shrinky ones that look like a truck on the front for those of you who don't look at them very often. And then regular vans can be electrified. So if we build, we need to run all the wiring right away. So the, what this is showing us is that he looked at all the different potential options for electrification. Trimed has one system, they looked at where you have a pantograph that comes down on the top of the bus and charges the bus. Several other systems have these entire structures that look like a giant, I don't know, it's just, it's over the entire bus yard, and the buses pull in and it charges them as they pull in. However, we're small, so what we're looking at is a fairly simple plug in your bus. So you run your wiring, so you've got an island, like for instance, in this drawing here, you've got this island, and this includes all your heavy-duty electrical transformers and everything. And then you run the wiring through all the lanes, so that you can put a charging station, three charging stations per each aisle, so. And if so, if you, when you build this, if you build it with the wiring in place, you don't have to dig it up and redo it later, which makes a lot of sense to me, because I do think we'll see electrified vehicles within the city within the next 10 years, easy. So. As far as how do we pay for this? That's the question. We have 100, 1.5 million right now in cash that's been saved up over the years specifically for this building purpose, so that's just cash on hand. I have more cash than that, but I also need to cover the first three to six months operating every year, so there always has to be about an $800,000 carryover in the transit fund. We have a little bit more beyond that, but I've earmarked just $1.5 million at this point, that's 50% of the building. So when you get past that, you have to come up with the other $1.5 million. Now, Julie had some creative ideas, she was going to float by me, I haven't heard them yet, on a couple of loan ideas, bond ideas to pay for that. There's also grants, there's federal grants. The problem with federal grants, and I'm just going to throw this out there, is as soon as you get federal grant money for a property or a building, that belongs to the federal government. So they will tell you what you can and can't do to it, they will ask you every year how you've maintained it, you have to keep records for them. Any uses you want to do outside of what they allow is just not allowed. So for example, out in Columbia County, we had a five-acre lot, and most of that was park-and-ride, and nobody parked out there. It was, it was a beautiful park-and-ride, so I wanted to allow the Saturday market to use it, and I was told, "No, it's federally funded property, you cannot allow that, it's not an allowable purpose." So that's, that's a simple example, but the idea is, is once you get a grant for that, just like our transit center here, that is a federally funded transit center, every year I have to submit to them, this is what we've done to maintain it, this is what we're doing currently, here's all the records of maintenance, and they have to meet certain criteria. It's not a bad thing, but just be aware that once you go federal grant on the property, it's now the federal government's property until you sell it, and then you give a chunk of cash back to them, or they release it to you. I think it's, our property out in Columbia County was 100 years, so I won't be here for that. So we do have to come up with the other one and a half, whether we go the grant route and cover the other 50% with grants, or we come up with a loan or bond to pay for that. So we currently pay about $4,500 a month in rent, so we can cover, and plus, plus our current payroll tax can cover, you know, paying back a loan or bonds, that's, that's very doable, depending on the size. I mean, at some point, you can't pay for anything. But additionally, we have been approached by Mr. Zimmer in the last few weeks. He is very interested in our location, he knows that we need to move because of size constraints, and he would like us to move sooner rather than later. So he has asked us to consider relocating temporarily while we do this build, because he's, the vet next to us wants to expand. He would like them to be able to expand, and he doesn't, he's been very patient, because I believe we told him years ago that we were going to do this, and so he's been fairly patient with us. And now he would like to expand the vet and allow them for their, so we're going to talk to him, I believe, next week, and meet with him and have a conversation about where we could relocate to temporarily, so that he can allow the vet to expand. I'm not sure where that's going to be. So we kind of need to kick, kick this off at some point and start, start looking at this. So as far as next steps, assuming that we want to move forward, so we need to do an RFP for the design of the building and the property, and then an RFP for build. We could do them as one, we could do a design-build, it doesn't really matter, I like the company that did the analysis, and sometimes those companies do a better job on the design, and then you go to another company that does the build, and they do a better job on the build, so that's something Scott and I could talk about, whether we do it as one or two. Either way, we have to go for RFP to get that kicked off. Then we have to figure out how to pay for it. And then we, then we would go on to build it after that. So, that's it. Quick, easy, simple. Questions?
And Mayor, with your permission, if I could get our public works director up to the table as well. Thank you, it's good to see you. Haven't seen you anything other than virtually, so it's good to make a connection here. You were talking about the property out by the shops.
Yes.
And one of the points that the consultants made was that there would be a conflict with the traffic that was city-generated.
Yes.
I'm just taking a guess, but I don't think it's 260 vehicles a day that would be city vehicles.
Yeah.
As opposed to truck traffic along Hazel Dell Way.
Right.
So I wonder, did the consultants actually get into the metrics, or did they just make a sweeping thing saying there's some conflict? Because did they, did they quantify the amount of traffic conflict from the industrial area?
So to be as clear as I can about the conflict, if you look at this drawing here, what I'm talking about is the movement within the yard. So we have to shift buses around, buses to get washed.
You're not, you're not talking about the service streets, you're talking about the property itself.
No, 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 I'm talking, yeah, we're just talking about just generally, just the general shifting of, buses are shifted all day.
Got it.
Right? And so, yeah, you're always going to have conflicts coming in and out, but when you're doing just general maintenance, you're now having to go in and out, and it just adds just that extra layer.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, okay.
Jerry, did the consultant get this right on the numbers and the square footage and that sort of thing? It's always important to know.
They did. Todd, Todd and the consultant and our city engineer, we all, and I was fully involved in this, and we tried hard to get it down to public works. And it works on the one, the last option that Todd recommended on the street, but it does impact, especially with fire going down there, the traffic going in and out, and the bus turning it. It would work, it's just, it's just the ideal spot is where they're at.
All right. Well, my bias is to co-locate.
Yeah.
With the idea of city employees or city employees, they can help each other, if you don't have the right kind of wrench, somebody else across the yard might, but...
We were with you on that, we wanted that also.
Okay. All right, but that's all I had, thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would concur. I wanted to see it go down by public works in property that we already own, so we could get rid of the property in Zimmer's property. I would like to continue to explore that if possible. I like the idea of consolidating.
Okay. Other thoughts, comments?
We're not at a decision point tonight, all right?
I don't, I don't believe that we're at a decision point this evening. Counselor Banks?
I would just, where it says push?
Yes.
Where it says push.
There you go. I would just, in voice of support for the proposal that you were suggesting, it doesn't require us clearcutting two acres of trees, which I do like. I'm not as big a supporter of clearcutting the two acres of trees there by Echo Park. So, all things being equal, I kind of like the property over there on Hazel Way.
So from us this evening, what would, what do you want from us right now?
I need to move forward in some form or fashion, so if we need to re-explore something, I need to get started on that. Because Bob has been very gracious up to this point, and I totally understand from a business perspective, he wants to move forward with his business, and I want to support that. So one way or the other, I've got to relocate at least for a time period. So the less time I have to spend in another rental, or in the bottom of the police department or public works somewhere, you know, making things work, the better. So the sooner I can get a, "Go ahead and start building on this property," the better off I am.
I appreciate that, thank you. So it sounds like we've got two proposals here. What, I'm hearing a mix here in terms of locations or possible, I mean, build-out spots. I mean, I'll just voice my piece in that when we looked at the Pioneer, the conversation with Pioneer Pump a number of years ago about that piece of property was the conversation of expanding CAT on that property, because we, much like the diagram showed, you know, building the building was up towards the front. It still added aesthetically to the industrial park, but didn't give that, that look of a, of a bus yard necessarily. There is that piece that, yeah, we're taking a industrial piece off, off the tax rules. That's definitely something that's been, something that we have talked about in terms of what should go out in the industrial park and what shouldn't. You know, I...
You know, I, I would love to see us co-mingle out there at the public park, uh, public works department. That's, I, I don't know if that's as ideal long-term for CAT, in my opinion. I think the Pioneer piece is probably the better piece long-term, in my opinion. So that's where I'm at on it, so. Well, I think that we need to give our transit director the authority to proceed with this. If we still want to have a dual track research, okay. But if the technical information leans towards the one Hazel Dell property, then I guess we should do it. You don't always get what you want. But if, if, if our best minds here say, well, I guess we haven't had a recommendation from our city manager yet. So Scott, part of the advantage that we expect from you, different from our department heads, is looking at this from an entire managerial ecosystem. So is the efficiency gained by co-location worth the limitations?
Yeah. Well, I, the, I think the advantages are from an operational and long-term standpoint, just kind of your pure business standpoint is the recommendation at our, you know, adjacent to our current location. So I do support that recommendation. That was, you know, this, there's been a, a substantial amount of study that's gone on here and Mr. Wood's done a very good job working with that consultant team to study that. We can, just to be clear, it is not an impossibility to go out to the, to the shops, but the recommendation is definitely to, to locate at the Hazel Dell point. So I would support that recommendation. The other, the other part of this I want to just note is, yeah, what, so I think generally what we'd like tonight is, is just a kind of a thumbs up, thumb down from the council to, to proceed and at, at, you know, if, if you give us the go-ahead at the recommend, with the recommendation at the, the property that we're talking about, or if you'd prefer us to come back and look at the shops a little bit closer and give you a, a bit more info, we're happy to do that. It just, as Todd said, it does kind of prolong our issue a little bit with the, we recently, our issue's been expedited with, with our current tenant, so, or, excuse me landlord. The other piece of this then is when you give us the go-ahead, we will get to work on the funding part of it and bring back a recommendation to you at some point with the, with the funding package looks like and give you the ability to approve that.
Well, Mayor, given the consideration, I'd, I'd support the Hazel Dell Way even though I wanted, really wanted it out of the shops, but that, it looks like the evidence leans the other way. Ben, I think the best thing we can do is not delay this to let our staff get on with their jobs. Question about the shop piece, and I apologize for my tardiness this evening. When we look at the shops area, and this is, I think, a dual question. Part of our negotiation in getting Cambie Utility to work in that negotiation was because we know as a city, we're growing and using the, taking over with the Cub piece of the public works area allowed for growth and for us to expand. How does these two entities out there at the public works department allow for that growth without having to then figure out, I don't know, 15, 20 years down the road where we now need to both expand both services out there? Are we get, do we get into a landlocked situation out there where we can't expand and we're back to where we are where somebody's got to move and it's probably CAT again?
Sure.
Right? So I, I think that's...
Yeah, no, you're, you're correct. It's pretty landlocked there. Because you've got Echo Park to the south, you've got the wastewater plant to the north and you've got the trail to the, whatever direction that is. And then you've got the other, the other land here, there just really isn't expandability. So...
Well, and that's, and I didn't even totally blanked on the wastewater treatment plant when we're talking about the expansion of, of water service, you know, and our access to the Blamette and what is that going to look like?
Right.
When we start to expand that infrastructure out there, now we're starting to put a lot of pressure on that area from an expansion standpoint. So, God, thank you.
Yeah, I support whatever, I mean, you guys have come with an idea in your head of where, what works best. And I think if there's a lot that works best, being the current property we own, I, I think we should press forward with that. If, I, I'd hate to put you guys in a position of trying to make something work. And so if you have a piece that looks, that works best for you, I would support moving forward with that option.
Derek, comment?
My, my first choice was always to have it out with public works, but I think that what I'm hearing tonight is that if we want a long-term solution and if we're going to invest $3 million on something, it should be something that's going to last us a while. So while it's not the idea, while it wasn't my first choice, it seems to make the most sense in terms of long-term future of the city. So I, I would throw my support towards Hazel Dell, even though it was less than ideal and wasn't what I wanted here. It sounds like it's the correct decision.
Yeah, we, we were on, just, just, we were on the same page. We were, we were trying everything we could to work out there. It just, there's, it's just not, the way everything is laid out, it's just too locked.
Sometimes you can't get that round peg quite out of the oval shape to fit it into the, the right slot, so.
I looked really hard too for Blamette access because I need my office to be there, but that didn't, Jerry would not give me any of that, so I tried that as well. No, it just, we really, that, we spent a lot of time just walking around with the consultants and looking over the potential options. And I just, we'd love to be out there because that's where the mechanics are and we take up 50% of their time. So it just doesn't, it doesn't work well.
Okay. So I'm hearing move forward with an RFP perhaps and next steps with the Hazel Dell property is what I'm, I'm sensing.
Figure out the financing and...
I'm still not a fan, but okay.
No, I got you.
It does strike me, it does strike me that they're both equally unexpandable. They're both two acre lots that are hemmed in. So like, I don't think we gain anything in Hazel Dell or, in that way. But, you know, I definitely, we should move forward. I'd support either side.
The, the, the gain on Hazel Dell is simply the shape. Because we, we don't, we no longer need, at the, at the other site, we need that same road that fire's going to use, that public work is going to use in order to rotate our buses through. Whereas Hazel Dell, everything is self-contained because instead of being long, it's wide. So you have, you know, our longest bus right now is 35 foot. I asked them to design it for 40 because at some point I'd like to get 40. They cost the same as a 35 foot and you gain several more passenger spaces. And the, the long and skinny was just the challenge on the one-off of territorial. You've got to use that road in order to move your buses.
Counselor Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jerry, how much of a hindrance is it really to use that road? If we're talking two acres over here or two acres over there, we already own these two acres. If we can sell the other and use the public works property, is it really that much of a hindrance to have the buses use your road?
No, we, we all work together. I mean, it's just going to be a lot of movement and stuff like that. Cambie Utility's going to be leaving and, and we're constantly back and forth on it. I mean, it's, it, it's, it's not the ideal situation, but it would work. I mean, the, the two options that we got, I, we looked at, we looked at, you know, putting it around all the shops, it's just the two acres out there, it's long and skinny like he says, so they'd have to use that road to move in and out. But it'd just be a little bit of wait and come in and go and it's not going to be the end of the world though, for sure.
I still think we should pursue that.
Yeah, and the, yeah, and the problem is, is having, it's right up against the UGB on the line there, so it just keeps it so narrow. The other thing is, is we got the future water treatment plant going in that we didn't talk about tonight that's across from the fire station that I think Mr. Murphy's going to be starting to work on. But the other, I know the other thing too is, was with that water treatment going in, the trees coming out for that, when we take, the other thing that's untracked is to take all the trees out along that strip.
So the trees are coming, whether we put buses there or not?
The trees would stay where the buses are, but in the back there'll be some. No, either one will work. It's just, it's just the, the decisions kind of, you know, if we want to go with the ideal one, the growth and all that. So, sorry Tracy, I, we, we try, I mean, we really tried hard. It, it would, it would work. It's just, you're, Todd's got all the facts out for you here.
Yeah, I mean, our consultant, on that skinny piece, the consultants kept going back trying to figure out how to make the buses move. Because not just the challenge of the road, but also when you pull those buses in, they have to pull in a specific way. Otherwise you end up happening, just to get them washed, you have to go all the way out, all the way back around, all the way back up again. So the, the design I have up there right now, that was his final, this is how we can roll the buses through and get them to the wash because of its, its skinny shape. You wouldn't have think it makes that much of a difference, but that's why we hire consultants to do the work for us.
Was a, was a third, was there any other dirt options looked at?
I'm not aware of other options.
Okay. I was just curious if...
Yeah, I, you know.
Your Honor, I have, I have actually one question that might help. Did they ever look at, because right now you have a current road, expanding that road in the opposite direction to give you some footage where you would need it for that turning?
Yeah, there's, they didn't, they didn't look into that, but that is an option. We could move it, take more trees down, move the road over. You could even change the intersection, maybe combine it with the Eco Park parking lot. We looked at all of that stuff, Joe, and...
Okay.
It would just get into that, run that cost back up of moving the road, getting it closer to the, but all of that's an option. It sure is. We just, Todd and I were just talking to the consultant through this whole thing and it just came back to, no matter how many times we talked to them, it came back to the best option is where they're at. And so...
And he's, he's done numerous designs for numerous transit systems, so it's, it's not new to him as a designer. That's why Kurt hired Water Leaf because they've done these type of designs for several other cities. And so they're very familiar with us.
My biggest fear of transit going in there at the time was the intersection. It's a safety issue, but our traffic safety commissions helped us and we're working through that right now. So we're going to clean that intersection up this, hopefully this year, which will help with the traffic movement through there. But, yeah, they'll, they'll, both of them will work. It's just, what's the ideal?
I'm clearly outnumbered. I'm not a fan. I wanted it shops. I'm not going to have a voice apparently, that's okay.
And Counselor, if you want to come down and take a look at what we're doing too, it'd give you a better visual too. I'm glad to, Todd, I'm glad to show you what's going on, just to make you feel better about it, but...
I was a big fan of the parking lot. To me, when you walk and you look at it, you go, this is perfect. Until they, until they start running measurements and then they, then they hand you the measurements and go, yeah, this does...
We even looked at the part, talked to the consultant about giving them the parking lot and them the building and us building a new public works building. I mean, we were exploring everything and that just wasn't feasible either because of the...
It's, you only get an acre out of the parking lot.
You get an acre.
And it's just not, it's not big enough for, for the current bus system we have. We have 18 buses, well, we will have 18 buses by the end of this year and I don't even have enough space in my current lot for 18 buses. So it's just, you need at least two acres. Two acres is the bare minimum, what we need right now. And, and it'll work for, this, this will accommodate about 26 vehicles, which right now we're at 18, so that gives us future growth of about eight. So it's, and that should be many, many years unless the city just explodes. But yeah. Yeah, they're, 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 neither, neither is fully ideal. I mean realistically, right? Realistically, a beautiful five acre rectangular lot would be ideal because then you're set forever. But with, with a pond, yeah.
What, what, the other thing that really impacted us on the parking lot acre, we put our Vector waste dump facility in the wrong place 10 years ago and it kind of messed that whole area up or that would have probably worked, but we looked at even moving that and that...
That was really expensive.
Yeah.
So well-built building that probably could never move.
So basically, the only option that worked was along the access road coming in and as you can see on the turning movements, that's just...
It's challenging.
Yes.
The, the customer aspect is also a tad on the challenging side because we do have customers that come to our location, many of them disabled because they want to get certified to do dialeride. And we are, this location is right off of 99, it's easy to walk to, or when the circulator goes by, it's going to be a block away from the circulator. Whereas territorial is not easy access. I mean, people can get there, but it's not as accessible. That was noted actually in the transit master plan that the location on Hazel Dell was better for customer access than several other options they had looked at back then.
Okay. Well, it's noted that I'm not a fan. We're moving forward now.
Guess you got the direction on next step, so...
Okay. Thank you.
We'll go from there. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Tracy, what if we called it the Hensley Bus Port on Hazel Dell?
Absolutely not.
That's not...
Not at all. Do not want to name all that. Oh.
Oh boy, naming rights. Here we go.
No way.
Waste water treatment plant.
All right. Next on our agenda here for our work session is a presentation and discussion regarding the street maintenance fee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yes. So at the June 2nd council meeting, we had a, we had a work session with you on the street fee. We presented a pretty extensive presentation with lots of facts and figures. That presentation was put into your packets for reference again, just if you wanted to look back at that. But we, tonight wanted to follow up on that. We, where we left it was provide you the information. We, I think that work session got cut a little bit short because we ran into the regular meeting and we agreed that we would bring this back for follow-up conversation. So we're not going to go through that presentation again tonight and, but we'd be happy to revisit any of the information that was in there. But essentially, what we, kind of where we left off was getting a sense of your direction on this. So just again, as a quick reminder, we have a street fee that's been in place from, since 2008. This is a council-approved fee and the rate was set at $5 per month for single-family residents. And that fee, that rate has not changed since, since it was enacted in 08. So the, the discussion really is around, do we leave the fee as is or do we look at some kind of either a flat rate increase or something tied to a consumer index or an inflationary index? We presented, the information we presented basically showed that if we were to have put into place any kind of inflationary index that might be typical, some type of a CPI or something along those lines, we'd probably be close to $7 with incremental increases over time. So I think it showed that if, if we had done that, essentially, we, because it's a flat fee without an inflationary index and the, the cost of all the things that we need to do to, to do our street maintenance program, obviously those prices go up over time, but our fee has not. We are not able to do as much with that $5 as we could 13 or so years ago or each year that goes by. I think it was to the tune of a little over a million and a half dollars if you looked at, you know, kind of how far behind are we? So over the course of time, we're about a million and a half or it's, it's a little bit more than that, but that's a rough number. And so it, that's the question that's before you is to consider whether we want to move forward on some kind of an increase. There are a number of different ways to do that, but rather than, you know, come back to you tonight and get into those details, we'd rather just, just sort of ask the question of, do you even want to explore this? There was also the discussion, I think there was some conversation around the idea of perhaps taking this out to a vote. That's not a requirement, but it certainly is an option that you could consider, but this is a, a fee, not a tax. If you have any questions about that, Mr. Lindsay could certainly address what the nuances there are. But you do have the, you do have the, the legal authority to enact a fee, so you, you're well within that. So really the question is, leave it, leave it as is or do something to begin the process of considering to increase or to, to catch up, if you will. So that's kind of where I wanted to start tonight, just sort of pose that question to you, see where that conversation goes. And again, if you'd like, we can certainly get into some of the, the details from the last discussion.
And I would even add a question to this list in terms of, do we want to explore it? Is we do we feel that we're, I mean, the numbers show that we're not keeping up. So but do we even as a group feel that what's being done is enough? You know, in terms of the road piece to begin with? I mean, are we satisfied with where things are at and where they're going? I think is the first question. I mean, we're obviously, some of the pressure, or not pressure, but pieces that bring this up for conversation has been, you know, that came up at the budget committee meeting and, you know, former councillor Patton has made this, you know, has brought this towards to us a couple of times as a conversation piece. So I guess I want to start there is, are we we content with where we're at and where we're going with the current state, with our roads and how we're funding them? Councillor Hensley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that we're doing an adequate job. I think we could do better. I see the numbers. I understand that we do have a shortfall from where we are, from where we want to be. So I understand the desire to raise the rate. But for the last 10 years, I have ran on a platform of never passing a tax. And this is a tax, not a fee, in my opinion, because it's everybody. A fee is optional. So for that sake, I'm not for increasing it without a vote of the people, because this is just another three-letter word for a tax. If it were optional, I would call it a fee. But when you're making everybody pay it, it's a tax. So I am not for increasing it without the approval of our citizens. And I've stood on that platform for the last 10 years, and I continue to stand there.
Okay. Thank you. So as a group, do we want to explore this, where we're at? Yes, councillor Ranks.
I would support increasing the fee and tying it to a consumer price index as well. And and, you know, I admire councillor Hensley's tax stance. I don't agree with it, but I understand where that's coming from. It makes some logical sense to me as well. But I would not recommend putting it out to the people unless it was a substantial burden on the ratepayers, which I don't believe it was based on our discussion on June 2. And so yeah, I definitely support increasing the street maintenance fee. I think it's the one thing all of our residents would agree on, that we do.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Parker?
Yeah, I I don't know why this wasn't indexed in the first place. Each year, we're able to buy less asphalt and keep up. So I also am in favor of increasing this and just doing it here as under the authority of us as a council.
Okay.
Yeah, I drive around a lot, and I drive through a lot of cities. And I have to say that I think Cambridge has some of the best roads in the metro area. And I think that's testament to how good a job Jerry and his crew does. I'm neutral on the matter. I really think that if we have the authority to enact a fee, and we just believe that it we need to, what does it hurt to let the voters have their say? And so I'd be a fan of asking the voters if they want to increase it. And if they say yes, let's increase it. And then let's figure out from there what how do we do it for the future? But I also understand the need to keep our roads at a certain level standard. So but I just want to make sure that Jerry knows that he's doing a great job with what we what he has now.
So we talk about an increase like that, like what are we just, are we looking at a possible conversation is a percentage increase every year? Is it a flat amount each year? We, I mean, I think that's that's something that needs to be considered as well when we talk about this endeavor.
Yeah. So at the last meeting, we we presented a couple of different potential scenarios. One of those was just a a flat rate, you know, perhaps adding, you know, a quarter a year to the $5 over a certain amount of time, or or some something along those lines. We just showed some, for, I think, just example purposes, we showed some graphs that showed how much, you know, how much money that would generate. The other, the other thing we talked about was the 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 cost index that we talked about was the ENR, which is Engineering, News Record and Construction Cost Index. This is a typical inflationary index that's used in construction. So that was the one where we we showed the hypothetical if if we had been charging this since 08, where we would be and and sort of how much money we've foregone over that time. And actually, I said about $1 million and a half. I think it was something closer to, I just revisited that again. It was, I think, something closer to 1 point. It was 1.36 roughly that we've foregone, if you will, had we had we charged that. So I think to answer your question, Mayor, it's, you know, it'd be a choice that you would have to discuss, or we could just, if you wanted staff to bring you a recommendation, we could certainly do that as well. But it's really a choice of, you know, just some kind of a flat increase to to try to catch up. But do you do you put some kind of a cap on that? Or do you just begin charging some type of a construction or add some type of a construction or or an inflationary index starting from some point and then just going forward, knowing that you've already kind of, you know, you've essentially were behind if if we had been charging that, but at least not falling further behind? So those are both options. And we just presented those as really as more example ideas of what you what you might want to do. There are a number of ways to go about this, but those are a couple.
Scott, would it, how much of a burden would it be to kind of meet in the middle on this and do maybe do a survey or a poll of the citizens to see who would who would be supportive of an increase? Maybe that would prevent us from having to put it out on a ballot, but it would at least give the taxpayers a voice to share their concerns or or support.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Are you asking me if that's something we could do? Or is it doable?
I'm just curious what sort of a burden that would be on city staff in order to do something like that?
We would, there are, there are firms that that do that type of work. And we would, I think, just look to to hire one of those firms. So I would have to come back to you with what a cost to work with a survey firm would be. But it's usually, well, I'm not going to say a number. I have an idea of what it might be. But I'd rather kind of confirm that and then bring that back to you.
Yeah, I'd be I'd be interested to know because that would, that would, you know, alleviate some of the pressure of, you know, understanding where the taxpayers who are paying the the fee or tax or whatever you want to call it, to have their input.
Yeah. So I don't think it would be so much of a staff burden. I think it's just a question of here's about how much, I think we could get a couple of estimates on cost and say, here's how much that would cost to do that survey, and then determine if you wanted us to expend that and go forth and do it. And then it would just be turning it over really to a firm that does that. Very doable.
I would also like it compared to what it would cost to file.
That we can figure out just through.
But it should be side by side if you're going to present us numbers. Let's make it easy.
Yep. Councillor Ranks?
Yeah, that was actually half of what I was going to ask is how much does it cost to, it was councillor Barrow's question is like, what's the cost for putting it out to a vote? I wouldn't mind knowing that. And also, I think that you recommended, Scott, putting together a staff recommendation, or you said you could do that for like, what would we do? What would be ideal for us? And I think that would be helpful for the council if we had that as well. So like, we're really talking about adding this much to the fee. Because there were a variety of different proposals. I don't know what's really necessary or needed, but, you know, I definitely support operating at where we were in 2008.
The cost of the ballot will depend on which election cycle you have.
Right. Yeah, the yeah, the ballot cost definitely, were you going to say something?
That I just, that is a huge difference. If if it's a special election and we have to own it, it's, you know, $30, $40,000. But if it's part of the general, yeah.
If we hit May or November, it's cheaper.
Yeah.
I would say too, though, with that, with the idea of going to the ballot, we're getting pretty close to the to the deadline for filing something for for this November. So, you know, we're going to, if we're going to explore, for example, a survey or come back with some different options, or kind of refine our options to present to the council, I think we're getting to that point of probably not making the November ballot of this year unless you gave us some absolute direction this evening and we move forward. I don't remember the exact dates to to file. But for example, later on your agenda, yeah. So we're starting to get close to that that time where we'd really have to move if we're going to do
So we'd be looking at a March special election or the May primary.
Councillor Spurrier, comment?
Yeah, I mean, just for frame of reference, on page 41 of the packet for people that are following along, the most, the construction cost index would have taken the fee up in the last 13 years. As there was one year between 2018 and 2019, it would have gone up 20 cents. But for the most part, it's between 10 and 14 cents a month. I understand people's frustration with the fee not having gone to the ballot to begin with. But I think that asking people to pay an additional, you know, 12 cents a month annually to keep our roads in better shape isn't the biggest ask. So for me, I would personally support going ahead and approving it. My my question and my problem with it in the last work session was, I'm not super interested in taking us from where we are now to where we would have been if we had been doing the cost index the whole time. I would be interested in either graduating it or just starting now and saying, let's add a CCI to it. So that, I mean, I don't want to add $2.5 to people's monthly bill out of nowhere. But I would be okay either graduating that in over time or saying from now, moving forward, we'll do a CCI, and your bill might go up 10 to 20 cents a month on an annual or by annual basis. I think that I I believe that if there's one thing that no matter who in town talks to me about, it's their frustration with our roads and and how they aren't staying up to the standard that I see in some other towns, despite all the hard work of our public works team. We've we've kind of tied to their hands by not providing them the funds they need. And I don't know where else in the budget that could come from. So that's my take.
So, okay, I also think if we're going to tie it to something, it needs to be tied to a percentage increase based on the, you know, consumer index or whatever each year that we do that. So thoughts on surveying our citizen really at all since that came up?
That would be the bare minimum for me.
Well, I can save us the $15,000 that it would take to hire Portland polling firm. Because I can already tell you that we only need two questions on the questionnaire for citizens. Do you want to have better roads? Yes. Do you want to pay for them? No.
What if we tied free pizza beer to it? Would that work? Is that?
I think I would be interested. I would be, I mean, I would be comfortable just moving forward anyway. If if the council wants a survey, I can get behind that. It would be interesting if we could provide them with examples of how much would it would go up. Not just say, are you interested in a street fee increase? But are you interested in an increase that has averaged 12 cents a month over the last 13 years? I think that's a much, much different question for the public. And I think that if we're going to ask them, we should provide them with the information necessary to make an informed decision. So if we're going to do a survey, I think that we should at least agree on, if we were going to do this, would we do it on the CCI? If so, that would need to be part of the surveys that we can say, if if the fee went up, it really, over the last 13 years, has only averaged about 12 or 13 cents a month. Are you willing to pay an extra 12 or 13 cents a month so that we could over time have another $2 million for roads? I mean, I think that's a no-brainer, but we need to ask. If we're going to ask in a survey, that's the way I would say that we would need to ask it. Not just, do you want to, are you okay with a fee increase?
Do you want better roads? Do you want to pay for it? Right? We need dive a little bit deeper.
Yes, because that's a pretty broad question. Are you willing to spend 12 more cents a month for better roads? I think that's.
Okay. Well, and a lot of that can be solved too with just a public hearing on the matter, which I think we would need to do anyways, in any regards, whether we're going to the ballot or we're doing the decision at the council and then watching Joe nod his head affirmatively. So.
Yeah, any increase in fees requires a public hearing.
Yes.
Brian, since we have a few minutes, I would like to understand Tracy's.
I'm just kidding.
She wants, he's asking to understand your position.
Ask your question.
Seek to understand.
Yes.
Because we have a number of fees. And we each year, we pass a new fee chart.
Yes, it's true.
But you don't require that to be a plebiscite.
I can choose to build a building and have to pay for the building permits. I can choose to rent the park and pay for the park fee. I can choose these fees. If you're telling me I have to pay it, it's no longer optional. It's not a fee, it's a tax.
Well, don't we have sewer fees that you have to pay whether you use it or not? Don't, I mean, we have a whole, we have a plethora of fees. We've got, we've got about 280 of them that that we have, and then we increase those each year. What what I'm afraid of is is going down a rabbit hole where in the future, we pick and choose which fees we refer out. You and I have a philosophical difference about whether a fee is a tax, and that's okay. We understand each other's position. But what I'm trying to think about are are the the councils that come after us, and they look back at this and say, well, at one point in one case, one council referred this. So if if we want to have a fee for a service that that is deemed necessary, or in fact, that that some service increases rapidly in cost, how how does staff discern? How do future councils discern it? I, you know, you, you, our first, our first rhetorical engagement was over this, that we're a republic, not a democracy, and that it's it's our job to make these hard decisions. You know, we we've had a public hearing. We have looked at a lot of information in order for us to make this decision. In the last two weeks, I've run into 10 people who think we get paid for our jobs.
Oh, that happens a lot, yeah.
So I'm not sure that.
We don't get paid.
I'm not sure that going out and and expecting our our constituents to do the type of work that that we've done can bring them to a decision that needs to be made. Our job is ways and means to pay for the things that need to be done. If this goes out and is defeated, there's no plan B. Don't you under, you you accept the fact that the level of our roads will deteriorate?
I understand that. But I am saying that for 10 years, I've had the same platform, the same, for 10 years, I've had the same conversations with people. People don't want to be taxed without a voice. So I stand on that. And I've been reelected on that, and I will continue to stand on that because that's what people expect me to do.
Councillor Spurrier, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I personally don't really see it any different than the sewer fee. You don't have to live here year-round, but you pay for the sewer year-round. You don't get to opt-in do it, right? We provide the streets year-round, whether you drive on them year-round, and they continue to, not only do they continue to deteriorate, but we continue to add to the system. We continue to add roads every year, but we don't increase the fee. So for me, it's like that, that's increasing fees to continue to pay for the services and keep the quality of our assets up is part of our job. And no one wants to do it. But we continue to add roads, but we've never in 13 years increased the fee. If you have a problem with the street fee, then you should have a problem with the sewer fee. I mean, and the bottom line is, cities have to provide services, and they have to pay for the services that they're providing. So I don't think you can really say there's a difference between the two. There, we have a lot of citizens that don't live here year-round, but they pay for the sewer year-round, and they don't get to opt-out. We charge them the same fee every month, whether they use it or not. That's that's, to me, what the street fee is. We have to provide these roads. We continue adding to the system. And we have to make sure that they're drivable and safe. And we have to make sure that they don't continue to deteriorate at the speed that makes it cost more to fix them later on because we haven't been able to adequately maintain them from the beginning. So to me, to to say that there's a difference between the two isn't really.
That's different for you. Okay.
True, yeah.
So it's an interesting piece, right? So I drive by and have watched how Red So I drive by and have watched how Redwood, South Redwood, yes, is finally tore up and being redone because of the work we've done to get that county road brought into the city to be able to do that. And they have scraped that down to the base, and they're going to have to redo the base. And that's, that's the neglect piece that we look at when we talk about our roads.
And the most expensive thing to do.
Correct. To go that far down and then start to fix the base, that's when incrementally costs go up. Constant conversation that I have with other mayors, and I'm sure many of you have had as well, is, how do we view roads? Do we view them as a utility, you know, in our, our city? So to me, they are a utility. We have to maintain those, we have to take care of them. How do we go about doing that is what this conversation is about here for this work session. So what I hear is, yes, we're talking, that we want to see a flat increase tied to some metric, probably the Consumer Index piece each year, and what is that going to look For me, I think there's got to be a cap. This could just continue to go in perpetuity, and I get that costs will exponentially go up year after year for years to come. But at some point, you know, are we at, you know, $20 a month for roads? So maybe that's where we want the cap? I don't know, that's a conversation piece. The, I would like to see, based on what I'm hearing, a staff recommendation for sure on, on what that would look like. Is it, are we looking at 10 to 15 or 20 cents, you know, each year as a potential, based on that index aspect? You know, now, the survey piece, I could go either way. I mean, I think much of what we're hearing tonight is our conversation, and then the, you know, it will be a public hearing piece, so the public can come in and weigh on, on that, and I, you know, and we then decide from that point if it's a, you know, it seems to me, you know, if I count heads tonight, it's a council decision that wants to be put out there. Totally, you know, that's, that's what the body gets to decide, and so, but we can get to that point when, and I think a side-by-side cost, right, of what are we looking at for, you know, was the cost piece comparison, that was part of the survey, right?
Survey versus going out.
Yeah, okay. So I don't, I don't necessarily know if we need a survey, but I put it out there as, since it was put out there, I want to see if there's any other entertaining on that, indifferent?
I think so, Brian.
Okay. Yes, Councilor Banks?
I'm not indifferent. I'm opposed to the public, to the survey. I'm also opposed to putting it to a ballot. I think that's something that we should be doing as councilors. I also want it said publicly, though, that a lot of the complaints around town that we hear about the roads aren't really our roads, they're county roads. The problem with South Redwood is that we've never been able to maintain it, because the county has owned it forever, and we just got ahold of it, and that's why it's finally getting up to regated. But, you know, the, the worst roads, the biggest offenders in town, belong to the county and are not maintained by the city, because we're not allowed to. I just think it's important for that to be said. Well, that's it. There was something else, but.
I'll add ODOT to that.
And ODOT, yeah.
Yeah. Not, not to make an enemy of ODOT, they're great.
We'd like to continue working with you, ODOT.
Yes.
ODOT and UP, they're lovely.
Brian, just.
We must have projects going with them.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification. When we're talking about the Consumer Index, the one we're talking about is the Construction Cost Index, right? I think it's important that we make sure that we're using the Construction Index and not.
The Consumer.
The Consumer Index. So I just, if we're going to, just for clarity, as we're moving forward with what that looks like, is that, are we in agreement that the Construction Cost Index, wasn't that your recommendation?
Yeah, that would be my recommendation.
I just don't want there to be any confusion about what index, because we want it to be tied to construction costs, since that's what we're using.
Thank you for grabbing that. So, so, okay, so no survey, we're looking at a percent increase, possible conversation about a cap level, staff recommendation, and then potentially further conversation on the route to go, in terms of council decision, vote, whatever. And we'll get to that when we get those other pieces from, from staff.
Right, and when you say cap, just so I understand, I'm sorry, are you saying like a never to exceed this amount? Or are you saying annually, never to exceed this amount?
No, I'm talking about a never.
Okay.
We're going to do this, but at some point, you know, are we, are we, you know, feing slash taxing our constituents on roads to a point that?
Gotcha. So not an annual, not like never to exceed 15 cents per year, you're talking about an at the end.
And at the end, like, we hit $10, that's it, we're not going any further? I don't know, you know, I know a lot of conversation we have is about, well, does that handcuff future councils from, you know, doing what they need to do? I don't, I don't believe it does. I suppose if they want to remove that cap, then they can make that decision when that time comes. But I think going on and continuing in perpetuity is, is it, can be dangerous, you know, in terms of what that cost would look like.
I think that's what matters.
Yeah. Yeah. Councilor Banks?
I would just say, if there's a gross discrepancy between CPI and whatever index we're using, then that would certainly be something worthy of reconsidering down the road. We don't want to hurt our residents, or their suspension systems.
Provide more business for Millaras and Leschwab. Right. Any other comments? Are we, Scott, you guys are clear on what your, your needs are, or wants?
Yes. Yeah, thank you. I do have a good idea of what we need to do. I appreciate the conversation, this is very helpful, because that's where we're at, was where do we go with this? So we'll bring back more information as soon as is possible, based on this, what I've got from you as direction. The only, the one thing I want to clarify is, for timing purposes, is there any sense that we're trying to get this information before you in such a way that you might be able to make a timely decision about something on the November ballot? Because I would say that that's a pretty, a pretty tough timing situation at this point for November, and we'd have to come back pretty quick and have this conversation. So just want to clarify that, if that's an idea that still wants to be explored.
My opinion is, you make bad decisions when you rush them. And if we haven't increased this fee since 2008, if we end up waiting until the May election, that's not going to hurt anything, I don't think.
The May election would have a considerably larger voting turnout than a November in an odd year, anyway. That would be a better vote if we were to do that.
Thank you. Yeah, just wanted to have that sense of how quickly we need to get back in front of you or not, and have a little more time to do some good work, so this is helpful.
Yeah, I would rather do good work, and make sure we're thorough on it, and then if we're able to circle back, then we'll be able to get that done.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on this topic this evening, in our work session? No? I will have to say, it is interesting to be able to do our work sessions in front of a live studio audience. We generally do these in the side room over here, over a much smaller table, and very few people joining us for our work session, so.
I think our work sessions are more interesting than the council meetings. We really get into the meat of an issue, so.
And I agree with that, I really, I do as well, and it's, there's not really a decision, it's more just, you know, we're digging in, digging into an issue, so, or tonight, two issues, so. Perfect. According to the clock up there, we got two, or 7:17?
14 minutes and.
Yeah, what time's Cupertino? So we got time, so are we be, is this being filmed and broadcast? Okay, so we are going to take roughly a 15?
13 minute break.
13 minute break, and we'll be back here at 7:30, so, thank you.